I would leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, January 25th at the Community Center, 1500 Edgewood Drive, Sebring, Florida. Annual landowners meeting is scheduled for Friday, January 25th at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewood Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Consent agenda, minutes of the Board of Supervisors regular meeting held on December 14th, and the Treasury Report involves financials from November 30th. Any motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion, public comment? Chrissy.
Supervisor Stiegel.
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
Supervisor Branson.
Yes.
Action agenda, resolution number 2019-01/11-01, a resolution of the Sun and Lake Sebring Improvement District to appoint a new supervisor to fill a seat vacated by Mark Camp pursuant to section 9-107 Highlands County ordinances. We have several people who have put their names in. If any of you would like to address the meeting, you're more than welcome at this point to do so.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm sorry.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Hang on just a second, Rick. We need to approve the motion first.
No, 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 we're not about that. They need to, because we're not to fill in the blank. So they can go ahead and talk.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Rick.
My name's Rick Holbert. I've been on the Board of Supervisors in the past. I've been a resident of Sun and Lake since '07, and I would like to be considered to come back on the board to help work with the community and provide what is needed for the community. I think I have enough background information over the last 12 years to provide the board with the proper information to support the district and the board with the proper information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. Members of the Board of Supervisors, ladies and gentlemen. I understand it's not a good thing to start with a disclaimer, but I've got to. I just had a procedure done for my throat, and so my voice is not as good as it ought to be. But I'd just like to tell you something about myself. I'd like to be on the Board of Supervisors. I've lived here since 2004. I was born in Jamaica, didn't complete high school, but had some nice jobs because in Jamaica you get good jobs if you had right connections. I kind of play sense. Then I eventually came to New York, went to New York rather, and thought I'd go to City College to their high school equivalency program. At that time, they were doing the Eastern European thing with lots of white folks, and they didn't accept me. Well, I went to Delhi Hanti High School in New York, and my brother said, "You're a smart guy. You don't need to do that." He said, "Go and take the equivalency." I said, "Well, I couldn't get in." He said, "Go to New Jersey," and I forget the name of the school. I said, "Do it." I said, "What, I might fail some of those subjects." He said, "Just go, and if you fail them, they'll give you credit for the ones you pass. Then you can do it over." But to my surprise, not to my brother's, but to my surprise, I passed them all with high numbers. So then I went to Atlantic Union College in Massachusetts. In academic probation, that is, I worked full-time in a hospital as a, something I forget now. But anyway, I was there, and one of my professors saw me one, and she said, "Where are you going so dressed up every day in white?" That's where I go to work. She said, "You work every day?" I said, "Yes." She said, "Don't you know that eight hours for study, eight hours asleep, and eight studies for school?" I said, "Well, I fix my 24 hours differently." She said, "Well, you'll never get an A in my class." However, I graduated from that school with honors, and as a result of that graduation, I was given a scholarship to Boston University, where I entered the Faculty of Social Work. Well, when I graduated, while I was there, we had people from Harvard, Boston College, and different colleges who'd come and give us lectures. So I struck up a relationship with a dean for admissions at the School of Law, and he offered me a scholarship. But the social work program was two years, where the law school program was three years. And I was getting votes. I said, "Dad, just stay with the law school program, with the social work program." I stayed there and graduated, and somebody in the Jamaican community wrote a little thing in the newspaper about my scholastic achievement. So while I was there, they sent me a copy of it, and not long afterwards, I got a job with the State of Massachusetts. While I was working with the state, I got a call from City College, same school that would not accept me because of my wrong color. Well, they offered me a job in a program they were starting to help with people who did not have the blessing of high school education, people like myself. So I took the job, and I was there for 18 years, became the head of the program and everything like that. Well, after that, my wife decided we had some, we had a daughter here, and she said, "Let's move down to, closer to her." So we went to Miami. Well, in Miami, I worked with the State of Florida for 10 years, and while I were children and families, while I was there, I got bored of that particular job, and said, "Let's go closer to our daughter." So I came here, and I got a job with Fresenius Medical Care, and I worked there for 10 years. I lived here since 2004, and I know really nothing about how the district is run. I must say, though, that I, up to a certain point, had no problems with running of the district. But then I changed my residence from Manor Drive and bought a house on Sunrise Drive because my granddaughter wanted to live with us. That house was a three-bedroom with two bathrooms, and this one was four-bedroom with three bathrooms. So I bought that house. To my surprise, I bought a house that had an occasional MOT, M-O-A-T. At those times, I could not get out of my driveway to go to the post office, to the post box, without wearing collages. Well, I put up with that for a while. Then I began writing the district, and someone, whose name I don't recall, and perhaps it's a good thing, came and looked at my house, and he said, "Listen, the thing is working as it's designed to work." I said, "Well, it's flooding." He said, "Yes, and there's nothing we need to do, and there's nothing we can do." Well, I was a little surprised at that reaction because in New York, we had reclaimed hundreds of acres from the sea and built a nice city at the tip of New York. So I thought it could be done. Venice does the same thing, although it's sinking now after hundreds of years. And Holland has their little thing. So I thought we could do something. I started writing the district, but the district, more often than not, decided to blame other people for the problems. And I said to the district in my letters, "I bet you, if I were the one who was making this problem of a MOT, you'd throw me out." So I kept on writing. One day, I had the good fortune to meet with Ms. Kennedy, and I told her that I didn't like the crisis management approach that was taken for flood mitigation. And we talked a little about that, and I told her what I thought. And she said, "That's not a bad idea, but we have a logistics problem," which is to say, as I understood it, and she might correct me, but I thought she meant that because the people who could come would have so much trouble moving their equipment to our out-of-way area, that made no sense. So they will continue with this haphazard approach to flood mitigation. I then, I sent several letters, and they all came out in newspapers. Unfortunately, I purged my files, so I don't have any of those, many of those letters. But I do have one or two which show that at one point in 2017, the district changed the rules of the game so that they put the cost of flood mitigation on the homeowners. During that time, I didn't even know that my house was being considered for a new driveway because I was told it was a different house, different house, but not mine. But I continued to write because I thought, as a resident and as a person suffering from the MOT, not only the back but in the front, I should continue to talk because it can be fixed. So I think, anyway, well, they did something, and I then found out that I had to pay for mine. So I paid for it, paid it off and everything, and then I saw that you were looking for somebody to be a supervisor. I met with one supervisor, and unfortunately, I don't even recall who it was, you know, being an old fellow, I don't pay a lot of attention to that stuff. But I spoke to one other on the phone. I was told then that I could meet with, I should meet with four supervisors, but I ended up meeting with two, one by phone and one, one with face-to-face. So my presence here is to again say that I am not happy with the flood mitigation system that we use. It seemed to me that if it floods here, you'll fix it, or there you'll fix it, but you don't have a comprehensive program, even in front of your offices down there. When it rains, it floods. So my one interest in becoming a member of this board, if you'll have me, is to work hard to find a way to solve this problem. When I was in the City of New York, I did things for the majority, you know, I did something for transportation. When I was in New York, I had a small business, and I was a white house, the white house came to my, to, they had a program at Oak State College, and I was at the university. I was there, and we talked about that. I'm saying all of that to say that although I'm not an engineer, I'm a social worker, and I have an education, I have a master's in education because my small business was a daycare, and we were paying lots of money to people with a master's in education. My wife was a microbiologist, I was a social worker. So we both decided to go and take a master's in education. So we did, and so we could stop paying lots of money to other people. We just used our own credentials. I'm saying that to say that even though I find no problem with the overall running of the district, except as it comes to flood mitigation, my sense is, with my lack of engineering skill, but with my ability for research, I'd be able to contribute something to the solution because there is no reason why we can't do an overall plan. I think we spent, I was told by one of the people I met with, that we spend over $300,000 per year for flood mitigation. I may be quoting if I go wrong, so I won't. If you challenge me on that, I'll take what you say. But if you're spending money on flood mitigation every year, whatever it is, $3,000, $10,000, or $300,000, why can't we take the time, do a comprehensive plan, and then allow all the residents, landowners, to pay a portion of the cost of flood mitigation? Whereas I paid, I don't remember how much I paid, $1,500 or something, I might have paid about $3 or $4, just based on the amount of people that are landowners here. So that's my beef. That's what I'd like to do. I know nothing else about the district, as I say. Ms. Kennedy does a good job, and I'd say that the supervisors seem to be doing okay except for flood mitigation. So that's my interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know me because you appointed me in December for a brief period. I'm happy to come back, and I would be honored to be reappointed again. I, to recap, I've had a 27-year career with Pebble Beach Company, a little smaller golf community in California, about 5,000 people and 5,000 acres. But I had a number of roles there, including golf operations management, marketing, and director of corporate affairs overseeing the operation. We were a company-owned development rather than a government-controlled. But it's an interesting juxtaposition and a lot of similarities, and I think that my experience with Pebble Beach Company can certainly help here. And frankly, I very much enjoyed digging into the early history, trying to piece together how this all evolved, and I think it's a very interesting development, and I am honored to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that's, okay, is there any public comment? We have a nomination, please?
I'll nominate Neil Hotelling. He spent five minutes up here. I don't think he did anything wrong in that time, so we'll give him another shot.
I'll second it.
Supervisor Brooks.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
Supervisor Stiegel.
Yes.
Supervisor Branson.
Yes. Do we have to re-swear our masks?
Yeah, we've got to re-swear them. You can have a seat.
Neil, please come up.
I, Neil Hotelling.
I, Neil Hotelling.
A citizen of the State of Florida.
A citizen of the State of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being an officer.
And being an officer.
Of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District.
Of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will honestly.
That I will honestly.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
The duties entrusted to me while in office.
The duties entrusted to me while in office.
As a supervisor of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District.
As a supervisor of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District.
Board of Supervisors.
Board of Supervisors.
And will not neglect.
And will not neglect.
Any duty imposed upon me by law.
Any duty imposed upon me by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
Okay, next agenda item, resolution number 2019-01/11-02, a resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award RFQ 18-08 for a full-service marketing agency to World Design Marketing for $30,250.
Motion approved.
Second.
Tanya.
Good morning. The district received one proposal from World Design Marketing for this bid. I'd like to introduce Mr. Wayne Johnson, new president, and Ms. Susan Delano. She's vice president of client services, and they're here today for a presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm Wayne. This is Susan. Our business is World Design Marketing. I spent most of my career with the Walt Disney Company, right up the road here. We're based in Orlando, and we work with communities just like yours, residential golf club communities, to help them market themselves. So I had a brief presentation of the process that we will enjoy together and wanted to outline that for you this morning. And I'll just go a little bit about our, I'll talk a little bit about our background. We've been in business about 16 years now, and this is our process. During my career with the Walt Disney Company, we learned a process by which great brands are developed and built and marketed and delivered to the marketplace in the most interesting and compelling way possible. We're going to start with Phase One, which is research. We understand that you had a pretty comprehensive review with Global Golf Advisors, and we would like to incorporate a lot of those recommendations into our work together. We will also spend some time here with you onsite to meet with the supervisors, the stakeholders, your community, your residents, to gather input, all to, good morning, all designed to develop a document called the Creative Work Plan. A Phase One deliverable will be this Creative Work Plan document, which is a 10-part document outlining all of the components of your marketing that we will need to address as we develop your message and your marketing plan and implementation of that plan. We'll present this document to you, which will complete Phase One. You'll get to review it. You'll get to have input. You'll get to share your ideas and thoughts with us, and we'll get a plan together that we all agree upon and move forward to creative development. Creative development is Phase Two, and that's where we start to build the story and start to build the graphics and the imagery and the words that we will use to present the story that we learned from Phase One to potential residents of this community in a way that is supremely engaging, highly efficient, and gets you the greatest return on your marketing investment. This will be a creative presentation that includes many different components and tactics to present the Sun and Lake story to the marketplace that we together determine. Once we get agreement on Phase Two in the creative presentation, which is the representation of that story we learned in Phase One, we move to the marketing strategy. And this is to develop the budget, the tactics, the calendar, and the implementation of that plan to get that message now to the prospective residents of this community that will help grow the community and the revenue to the district ultimately as we get new residents and some more land in the community. And secondarily, I understand there's also a charge for the golf course with some specific needs and shoulder seasons and certain things that we can address as part of this marketing plan, and also general traffic to the restaurant that we all enjoy here at the community as well. So that'll be a part of this strategy. It looks something like this. We'll have a 12-month calendar with the budget items all outlined that we'll all agree upon and have a very nice, organized approach for marketing the community. We'll work closely with Ariel and her team to use all of the skills and talents available here in the community, and then we'll complement that with expertise that we have at World Design Marketing to make the best use of all of our talents and resources. Once we have the strategy set, and we have our message right, and we're ready to deliver, Phase Four is the ongoing implementation. We will start deploying based on that marketing strategy in a very orderly and organized way, and we'll track, and we'll meet. Back at our office, we meet weekly on every active campaign that we have to see how it's tracking, to see the results we're getting. We'll communicate with you all and through Ariel and her team, understanding what we're seeing back here at the community. We'll monitor and report those results to you every month with how your money's being spent and what we're getting for that money and how we're doing against all of our objectives that we define together. And we'll do everything we can to make sure that you maximize every dollar we put into our marketing, and there's a great return on that investment back to the community, and that's always our goal. So that's kind of the four-phase implementation plan. For the overall marketing of the community, there's a little sub-project here, I understand, which is the website integration, and as part of our proposal, we propose a micro-website, a marketing-based website that is specifically designed for all of the traffic we generate from our marketing efforts to welcome people to our community through a marketing conversation specifically. The analogy I might use for that is today, you know, you have a beautiful website for your community, and it works well for what you're doing and for the improvement district, and people go on there and, you know, pay their taxes and pay their bills and learn and get their tee times and do all that functional stuff. But the analogy I would use is, for example, up in Orlando, if you were planning a trip to the City of Orlando, you likely would not go to the City of Orlando website where people pay their taxes and do all that government stuff. You would likely go to a website that's Orlando.com, which is a visitor-based website that has beautiful imagery and fireworks and castles and all that fun stuff that you want to go visit Orlando to. That's kind of what we're proposing for you, building a micro-website, maybe 10 pages or so, that's very marketing-focused, highly emotive, really puts the community out there in the best light and is the most compelling introduction to potential new residents to your community, and then eventually funnel them into the appropriate channels that Ariel will direct us to and get them to the right people to move them forward. And that website will be highly mobile-friendly. As you know, most of these marketing websites are being viewed 50 and 60% on mobile devices and tablets today, so we'll have a highly responsive design for whatever that website looks like, lots of pictures, lots of emotion, lots of words, and that will be sort of the landing page for the website. And then we'll feed people from that right to your Sun and Lake Improvement District site. So that is, as a result of this work, this is kind of what we should expect together as a result of this assignment and working together over a period of time. We will have a compelling and exciting new marketing platform for the community. We will have order and consistency across all communications. We're always looking for that cumulative effect of everything that we do. People start to recognize it out there, and all this stuff builds a wonderful story for the community. We'll have a highly effective marketing strategy to promote this lifestyle. We're selling a very interesting and compelling lifestyle here at Sun and Lake, and people will start to understand what that lifestyle is. We'll create greater demand for living here and overall awareness that this community exists and is available. We'll increase our online presence, so much of what we do today is in the digital space. People that are looking to relocate and move and travel are all doing it on their phones today, and we'll have an increased online presence. We'll develop specific messages to unique audience segments that we define together, and we'll get the right message to the right people at the right time, and that's always our goal. We'll see ultimately more members at our golf club as a result of this. We'll see increased traffic to our restaurant, and ultimately, higher revenue to the district when we're done. And that's what we can expect as a result of this assignment. It's about a 90-day to six-month process altogether, depending, it's usually not depending on us, it's usually dependent on you guys and how fast we move this along and get steps approved as we go. Our first step really will be to implement an onsite immersion period for WDM and our team to come here and get all the components we need to build that Creative Work Plan document, and then once we start that somewhere between 90 days and six months, we'll be ready to roll out. So that's kind of the, that's the proposal, that's the plan, and thank you for your time.
Any board discussion or question?
I have some questions. You indicate you work with other similar communities.
We do.
And I'm wondering if you are developing websites for their government entity or for their development entity?
Development, all the marketing side.
The development and marketing.
Yes.
Yeah. But my concern is that we're really a government entity.
Yes.
And when I look at the return on investment, you know, if we get 500 new residents out of this... out of this, that might pay for Phase One.
Right.
But it's a, it's an interesting challenge to, to be the government entity that's involved in marketing.
Sure.
Because we don't have a principal developer like Disney had when, when they developed their capacities up there. The, the other question I would have is that the, this thirty thousand for Phase One, and then you're talking about monthly fees based on the marketing, and I know we haven't defined that yet, but can you give us a rough idea of what kind of monthly fees we might be looking at?
The monthly fees will come from the, the marketing budget, and in the case, as I'm assuming the workload here will, will not be very intense. Susan, do you have a sense of what that would be, or? It's all based on really time and how much Ariel and her team do, how much we do. Sometimes those fees are six hundred or seven hundred dollars a month, and sometimes they're two thousand a month, you know, they're in that range. And that just depends on how much resources we need, you know, on an ongoing basis for marketing, how much money we're spending, what your budget is. Generally, and we're not really aware of what the marketing spend budget is, but generally it's somewhere in that ten maybe to fifteen percent of that budget might be fees for, you know, creative development and resizing ads and trafficking things and reports and analyzing and implementation, so somewhere in that range, I'd say.
You're not recommending any click-based marketing?
Well, that would be, that would fall into the media budget, if you will, so our fee is kind of separate from that. But yes, that would be one of the tactics on that twelve-month calendar. There certainly was a Google AdWords line item in there, there certainly, certainly was some digital line items in there for click-based marketing. So yeah, that would absolutely be a part of it. And we'll determine that together based on, you know, once we set the goals and objectives and we really understand what we're trying to get, we have a tremendous amount of experience in telling you what it's going to take. If you, if you tell me five hundred residents is the goal, you know, we can build you a plan for.
Obviously, the goal would be higher than that, because we, we got to have some return here. But the, the follow-up question on that, obviously this can get very expensive very quickly. Do you have anything in this preliminary budget for the collateral, the photography and the video that you've got there? Is that something you would need from us, or is that built into this budget already?
Yes, that assumes that that is available. We are, just, just to address this overall, I want, I want to just say one thing, that we have built our firm over sixteen, we're now in our seventeenth year, on long-term relationships. We're looking to benefit the community, we're looking for economics that work, and we're looking for a long-term deal. So the upfront stuff, this scope of work is a one-time fee, because these things need to be done at this time. The story needs to be developed, the marketing materials need to be designed, the words and all. Once that's done, that, that goes away, that's not an ongoing, not an ongoing thing. During that process, we're very collaborative and helpful, like we have resources, if we need a, an image or a photo, we can generally get that and take care of it in the budget you're seeing. If we decide that we want to do a comprehensive, you know, multi-day photo shoot, you know, with a full, full-on crew and talent and resources like that, that would not be included in this budget. So we'll get what we need to, in this budget, we will deliver you a spectacular marketing platform to go forward with, absent, you know, something, if you decide you want to do a video tour of your golf course, for example, or something like that, that would not be included. Those would be something that we'd have to draft. But we have included all the resources that we need to deliver a beautiful campaign for you, so that is, that is included. Is that clear?
And the nature of the web presence that you had developed for us, that's, apparently we already have the URL and the hosting ability, but what, what exactly would you be delivering as far as the web presence?
We'd be developing, delivering a fully programmed ten-page micro-website for marketing purposes. That'll be ready, ready to go. I think what happens in the creative process, as we develop ideas and things start getting exciting and we start getting on a, on a track with an idea or a thought or a theme for marketing the community, sometimes the URLs come out of that, you know, we, we get, you know, six or eight different URLs pointing all to that website. So that'll be determined, but that's all, I mean, those URLs are very inexpensive, but that'll all be determined as part of the process. But you'll get a fully functioning, you know, marketing website delivered that, that will be ready for, be ready for traffic when we begin implementation.
Okay.
No add-ons. I mean, I want to say that this, you know, this is a finished deal. We're as, we're as interested in containing costs as you are, because we want to, we want to stay together for a time, and we want to produce a result, and we want to see success here. And once you guys say, wow, that was really well done, and that's how we, that's how we came to you, through the recommendation that we did, and that's how we built our business. So that's our goal. I'm not, we're not, I've always had the philosophy, I've hired some of the top ad agencies in the world, and we've got nickel and dime to them. And when I started really, I said, with our billing, our billing is so simple. Your invoices and your billing will match that proposal to the, to the dime, and everything that will be delivered there will exceed your expectations, I promise you, and there will be no extra add-ons, there'll be no extra nickel and dime things. I just have that idea of, you know, get the big, get the big picture right, and the little stuff takes care of itself, and we'll be okay.
Okay. So we're going to have, how many websites? We're going, four or five still? Is that correct?
I don't, I'm not familiar with what you currently have, I know you have-
Well, we have four now, I believe. Is that correct?
We have four URLs. Yes, we have four.
Four. And you're going to take one and turn it into a marketing website. Is that correct?
One of those is a live Sun and Lake that's currently, that does not have a, a landing site or, or any type of community page, and that's something we've, I guess, had that URL for a long time. So the idea is to create that marketing maybe based on that URL, which is not being used currently. I mean, that's just an option, but like you said, you could have multiple.
Yeah.
You know, but the idea is to use the one.
So eventually, we're going to go to one?
No, multiple URLs, but all interlinked, so that ideally it's seamless to the user.
Okay. When I look at your references and I see the value of the project, is that how much they're paying you a year?
What's that?
When I look at your references and I see the value of project, is that what they're paying you a year?
What is, what is in the proposal? I'm not sure.
The reference is, I don't see the dollar.
Is there a dollar amount on the reference?
Yeah. For instance, South Florida State College shows value of project a hundred thousand annually plus.
Yeah, that includes their media spending. That includes all-
So that's what they're paying you a year?
No.
No.
No, they pay us a very small piece of that. That's their spending overall. That's the amount of money we manage for them.
Oh, that's their budget, and you help them spend it?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That goes to the, you know, the advertisements and the billboards and the, all the digital-
My biggest concern with doing this whole project would be, how do we attract people out of state?
Yes. Yeah, so much of that is done today in the digital landscape. It's, it's very cost-effective.
If I may, outside of the website that you'll be developing for us, what else would you do out, for out-of-state?
Yeah. Have you ever seen an ad on your phone or an ad on, like if you go to ESPN dot com and you see an advertisement on the side for a golf club or a-
Yeah.
Residential community or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are digital ads that are, that are placed for fractions of pennies, and those ads are placed through sophisticated software that we develop that identifies your target market and people that you want to attract to this community, that will learn as we go through our initial phase research process. And we will build parameters that start delivering ads like that, that say, you know, Sun and Lake Community and have imagery on it and words on it, that show up on people's mobile devices and on their computers when they're traveling through the web or doing their vacation planning or looking for retirement communities. Some of it will be pay-for-click advertising, when people are searching for retirement communities in Florida. We'll pay money to make sure that Sun and Lake comes up at the top of that search, so that you become in the, in the considered set. So those ads, I don't, I'm not familiar with your budget just yet, because it hasn't been given to us, but say it's fifty thousand dollars a year or something like that. We'll take some of that, like you're spending money to market this community, we'll take some of that money, we'll allocate it to delivering hundreds of thousands and likely millions of those little impressions in targeted areas around the country to people that fit our demographic and psychographic profile that are likely to be interested in moving to Sun and Lake. So we'll, we'll, does that, does that make sense of what I'm saying?
It's expensive, it's expensive.
But, but those, we can spend hundreds of dollars a month, we can spend thousands of dollars a month on those ads, they're fractions of a penny each, and they get a, you know, a certain percentage of them get clicked on, and then when someone clicks on that, they're on their stock page and they're checking their stock prices, and all of a sudden, an ad for Sun and Lake comes on, they say, oh, wow, that's interesting. They click on it, that will take them right to the marketing website that says, welcome to Sun and Lake, we're so glad you're interested in our community, click here to start your journey. And they'll click, and we'll introduce them to the lifestyle and all the attributes of the club, and that's how we'll begin the conversation. So that, I'm not sure if that makes sense to you, but-
Well, I'm leading towards this guy over here-
Because he knows, yeah.
-expert in the field.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you, I mean, when you price us out and tell us what we think, what you think we need, I don't want you to keep a number in your head. I want you to tell us what's right.
Sure.
Yeah, but I don't think that's happening. I just want to make sure that we all understand that.
Okay.
There is no budget for this at this point in time, as far as I'm concerned, because we've never, we don't know what we're dealing with.
Sure.
We have some people who know more than others and could guide us.
Yes, absolutely.
But if it's going to cost us, in your opinion, X, I think you ought to say, here's what I can do for X, and then we'll decide if we can live with it or tell you how to massage it or something of that nature.
Absolutely. We'll work closely with you on determining that budget. Well, we do it both ways. We say, what are you, what are you trying to accomplish, number one, and then we can tell you what that'll cost, and then we can say, what do you, what do you reasonably want to spend, and then we can tell you what you'll get for that, and then we'll try and get it, you know, get it to where it's a workable number that everyone's-
I mean, my biggest concern is, we spent thirty-eight thousand dollars last year and got nothing.
Right.
Basically, nothing. I mean, most of us knew the information that we received was like confirmation of information. I don't want to spend another thirty thousand, I don't want to spend another nickel and get nothing.
No. And you shouldn't. If you're getting nothing, yeah, thirty, thirty-eight thousand dollars becomes an expense item in your budget that you shouldn't be. You should be seeing a return on that investment. You should be spending, you know, thirty-eight thousand dollars and getting some result for that that is quantifiable, definable and trackable.
We got a lot of paperwork.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's probably, probably not the best way to spend the money then, I would say. But we'll work, again, as part of that initial process, we're going to work closely with whoever it is determined in your group to work with us, to define those objectives, define the goals, and what does make sense for this community, and what does make sense for how much money we want to spend. There is a lifetime value of a resident to this community that's beyond, you know, ten dollars. I mean, if someone moves here, you know, there is a value to that person, you know, over the course of how long they're going to stay here, to the district, and we just have to work out what that economics is. If we can bring how many, you know, several, however many new residents here, there's, you know, there's a value to that.
Do we set goals by, like, number of residents per year?
Yeah.
We attracted ten people, that's reasonable?
That's reasonable, yeah. And then what we'll do from there is we'll back out, if you want a hundred new residents, you know, that means we probably have to generate a thousand leads, you know, through our marketing, and that, those will trickle down into, people will come visit, they'll tour, they'll decide not to move here, some will decide to move. You know, we'll build a pipeline or a funnel that gets us to that number of a hundred, and then we'll tell you what it will cost.
Okay. I don't know if you got, I have one last question. I don't know if you got this far, but in here, it says you guys are going to divvy up the responsibilities, you know, we'll take some responsibility, you take other responsibilities.
Yes.
And we've only been talking about the cost on, on your end for your responsibilities. Do you have any clue, I don't know if you know enough about our, our setup at this point, I mean, how sure are we on our end of doing what we need to do?
No, not at all. I think you guys are in great, I think you're guys in great shape. Ariel knows what she's doing, and, and Tanya has a clear understanding of what we're doing here.
So with the existing staff, we're good, we can do it?
I think so, yeah. Think, like, for example, let me give you an example of that, you know, for example, social media, you know, some companies pay us a lot of money to manage their social media, and we do it. Not, maybe in your case, probably not recommended, because you really want it to be authentic, so that might be something that your team handles, because it's just a daily ongoing thing of, of posting images on social media networks that you guys can handle, you don't need to pay us to do that. So that, that would be an example of something you can handle. The media buying, like, if we're going to negotiate a, a digital advertising buy, for example, like, we're really good at that, and we have a lot of experience, and we know how to negotiate that well, and, and know how to deliver those ads very cost-effectively, so we would handle that, and there would be some, whatever time it takes to do that, there'd be a fee associated, but that would fit in the budget of, of the spending.
If we got a hundred leads, we could handle it.
What's that?
Who would take care of the hundred leads? If we got a hundred leads, we're off and doing something.
Yes, you'd have to, you'd have to be able to handle those, that's right. I don't, I don't know enough about your organization at this point.
So there may be a cost on our side that we have to look at?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I think the bigger, the bigger challenge is that we're trying to generate leads to get people to move here, and we don't have the facility to sell them any real estate. We don't own any real estate, we're not realtors, so who, who is going to do that? Are we going to be referring them out to realtors to meet with them and show them around Sun and Lake, or, or where is that? What are we doing on the back end? That's, that's not fine.
That's a very common practice, is that we engage the realtor community.
The more common practice is that the, the website would drive them to the developer who has realtors and can sell them the, the property.
Oh, sure.
We just don't have that developer, and he's not paying for this, so-
That's right.
-that's where it becomes an interesting challenge for our district.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I, I talked to Tanya yesterday, and I think Cliff and they're on board with it, and, you know, interesting questions, a couple of them I asked to them yesterday, but I just hope it works, and we have a problem with real estate as far as having somebody do it, and we have problems with the county, so that is our biggest challenge, is to get the people to the right places to buy stuff. That's, that's something we have to look at. But I want to try. I don't want to just stop doing stuff.
I think you just heard precisely why we need a marketing firm. And trying to solve the problem before we hire the guy is kind of putting the cart in front of the horse. We get the right people in place, and having hired marketing firms on multiple occasions, you're getting sold a deal that you don't really know much about, and it all gets down to performance after the fact.
Right.
So we're going to pay thirty thousand bucks, we're going to get a deliverable, and we're going to see if it works. And that's where you talk about the long-term relationship. If it doesn't work, then there isn't a very long-term relationship.
That's right.
So I'm impressed what you have done for the college, and that's the reason, I don't know if I made the motion or seconded, but basically, I think that was, that's an excellent presentation and exactly where we should be going, given the fact that we don't have a developer and we don't have real estate to sell, although we do have some lots to sell.
Okay, I have a couple. First, from a budgetary perspective, if this were to go to the top level, two thousand a month, which is kind of an up-to number that we just got, we're talking fifty-five thousand dollars in the first four-year, what does that mean to our budget, and is that, does it give us any room for other activities that we may have to fund from a marketing perspective?
This year, we have fifty thousand in our budget. I believe as we go through this process, we'll determine what next year's budget would be, so starting October first is our new budget cycle. So to answer your question, I, you know, right now, we can cover this cost within our budget, and then we will, we'll come up with a, we'll have a better idea as we go through the process of how much it's going to cost us for next year, and what, what types of, what funding, what we want to do, and how much will it cost us, and what the board is willing to do within that budget.
Those numbers I provided were examples of, of current situation. Someone spending that kind of level, let's say two thousand dollars a month, it has a marketing budget somewhere around a quarter of a million dollars, maybe two hundred thousand dollars. You're not spending that amount of money. If your budget was thirty-eight thousand dollars, it's not going to take us that much time to spend thirty-eight thousand dollars that it's going to cost that much money, if that makes sense. The fee is, the fee is really aligned with the amount of work, and the amount of money, and the amount of tactics being done. At thirty-eight thousand dollars a year, if that's, if that was the number last year, the tactics are somewhat limited. There's not a whole lot of moving parts in that budget. So our fee to manage that would be much, much lower. It wouldn't be anywhere near that amount. It, it, it has to fit. It has to make sense within the overall spend. And that's why I say you can generally measure, it usually lands in that ten or fifteen percent range of, just as in doing this seventeen years of, of what that budget is, that the amount of time it takes us to manage, implement, and, and track and report on that. So it wouldn't, you know, it would never be a, a super-high fee for a very small budget. That wouldn't happen.
Basically, your fee would cover ad placement, billboard placement, stuff like that.
Absolutely. Tracking, reporting, analyzing.
Depends on what we're spending. On the other side, it's what he's going to charge us. So it's, we don't have the money to, to go to a two-thousand-dollar-a-month budget. We're, we'd be on the low end of that schedule.
And I would suspect that would be the case, yeah.
Okay, you have a timeline in here that I, I guess I see as the upfront work.
Yes.
We will have nothing until these activities are completed?
Each, each phase has a deliverable, you know, so within three to four weeks, that creative work plan will be completed, and you'll have that.
But my question is, are those concurrent or consecutive? Are we talking thirty days? Are we talking ninety days before you're ready to hit the ground running?
Yeah, ninety days would be the, the timeline to, to hit the ground running. Some of the, some of the things will happen concurrently.
So, a hundred and twenty days from now or thereabouts, we're going to lure people down here and introduce them to the world's largest sauna.
Yes.
They're not going to buy us.
We'll be, we'll begin that, we'll begin that process.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we have to, to think about timing.
Yes.
And where we want to put the effort.
Right.
In, in terms of, when do I want you to travel to come and see us?
That's right.
Second question, social media. We've talked a lot about that, and I know Ariel's up to speed on how to effectively use the Twitters and the Facebooks and whatever else. How does that integrate with your effort? Is that, is that linked somehow, or are we going to have? How do I get that person who got something on Twitter to live Sun and Lake?
There, well, it's linked.
Mechanically.
It's, it's linked through messaging. You know, we want the story straight. You know, we want to be all speaking from the same storyline, if you will. So the social media posts and, and the activities on social media promoting the community will, message-wise, voice-wise, the theme and image-wise, they'll match what we're doing out in the, in the marketing world. So they'll be, they'll link that way. Some of the social media activities are going to just be community-based activities. The, the point of social media is to build community, and people that want to move here are going to go visit your social media pages to see, what is it like to live here? They want to see the people and the activities and the things going on here. So that has to be authentic, and that's real, and that's what I'm sure Ariel's got a wonderful handle on, is that those things are being posted on a regular basis to give people a wonderful idea of what the lifestyle is like here at Sun and Lake and the community. There will be, I'm sure, marketing posts, because throughout the year, I'm sure we're going to have, you know, pushes, and, and we're going to have areas of ramped-up budget when the timing's right, and we want people to come, and we'll, our social media will support that with the same type of posts. If we're, if we're doing activities to invite people to our community, or having a community showcase, or something like that, you know, the social media will tie into that, and we'll coordinate that through that calendar that you saw with Ariel and her team. So everything is always coordinated, always synchronized, and everything is telling the same story.
If we, if we invite somebody to come, should we have a place for them to stay?
That, that is a, a possible tactic, you know, if you want to invite people to come for a weekend visit or something like that, yep.
We have some limited stay-and-play capability, so I would assume we'll continue to have that.
Yeah, sure. That's, that's a wonderful tactic, absolutely.
Okay, any other board comment or question?
I'm following up on some of the other discussions that's gone on. So, if we've got a fifty-thousand-dollar budget, you'd be looking at spending five thousand dollars on the website and the promotional campaign. What does it cost to design a pay-per-click ad that, that people can see? So just the design of the ad to get it online, and then...
Yeah, that's included in, in the initial budget. You see, there's a production line item.
Okay.
And the production line item is actually producing the actual ads. The creative development is the conceptual side, the, you know, the, the presentation of the idea.
Right.
And that's one level of design. And then we actually have to implement the actual ads. If we're going to put a billboard up, it's going to be the actual final art for that billboard with high-res images and the proper words and the sizing and everything for that specific billboard. That's included in the production line item on the proposal. So that, that includes the, all, you'll have a full, ready-to-go, implement-able package at the end of this scope of work. There will no, there will no, be no more ongoing design costs.
How much is a billboard on I-4 costing?
Well, yeah, the, the range is, is tremendous.
Tremendous?
Yeah, on I-4. Yeah, it's, it could be thousands of dollars a month, it could be hundreds of dollars a month. Depends on where on I-4. I mean, if you want to take that billboard right downtown that Universal owns for the past twenty years, it's going to cost you a lot of money, so. You're not in the, you're not, you're not going to be buying billboards on I-4.
We wouldn't buy one on I-4? I don't want to buy one on 27.
No, I don't think so. I, I, I think that would be unlikely. Well, and, and honestly...
Where would you buy, where would you buy us a billboard?
And honestly, yeah, that, that comes out of this process, but, you know, we want to, when you're, when you're going on an outdoor advertising like that, you know, downtown Orlando, hundreds of thousands of people are passing by. You're paying for a tremendous amount of traffic, ninety percent of which has no interest in Sun and Lake or living in Seaborn, Florida. You know, so you're paying a lot of money for a lot of wasted eyeballs. You know, you want to maximize that return by putting those billboards in places where people are very likely interested in locating to this area. So going downtown I-4, where you're competing with Universal Studios and Disney World, who are spending hundreds of millions of dollars, we don't, we're not going to get into that. That's, you're not in that category. And honestly, it doesn't strategically make sense, because the, the cost is just, you're paying for tremendous amount of, of visibility that you don't, that is not going to give you a return. So we would have to find areas and corridors that are likely, for people that are heading this way, are likely to be interested in this area, which would then put you down into the several hundred dollars a month range for a billboard, rather than ten thousand a month, more.
And then I have a question for Tanya. The budget's fifty thousand dollars for this, this year for marketing, and we're spending thirty thousand here. What else are we spending marketing dollars on? I know we've got the, the billboard where we're advertising the restaurant.
Yes, the district and the, the golf budget are splitting that cost. That's a six-month advertisement on that billboard for Island View. So, other than that, do we have any public, we have some minor, minor print, but that's it. That's all we have, so. And then Cliff has forty thousand or so in his, in his budget. I don't know if most of that is local, Cliff, that you have right now. Am I speaking, is that?
No, that's, that's correct.
About, about right.
Almost all local advertising.
Local, so, but as far as the district, that's all we have right now.
Collateral around, you know, onsite collateral as well. There's a big chunk of it.
So there's, there's a district budget and a Billy Casper budget for marketing?
Yes, and the marketing on, yes.
Can Billy Casper pay for some of this marketing?
That'll, that'll be something that Cliff and I will have to discuss. Most of your marketing dollars are focused on golfing, and maybe coupon ads and different things, you know, restaurant, a lot of it's restaurant, too, probably half of it.
But we're buying the facility for this program.
So that'll be something that we can, we definitely have those discussions.
How unique are we in terms of your experience? Yeah, we're pretty well-isolated. I firmly believe that ninety percent of the traffic on 27 has a destination on 27, so we're not likely to be their destination because they see a sign. Have you had any experience with that kind of a situation? I mean, we, we have stumble-in residents that just happened to find us. I know one guy that uses the Outback Theory. He looked everywhere. There was an Outback, because he thought it was probably a big enough town that it would be stable.
And you have an Outback, so you're in good shape.
Yeah, and we do have an Outback. But that only works for one guy that I know of. Most of our influx of new residents has been through word-of-mouth.
Yes.
And I'm saying probably seventy-five or eighty percent, or maybe even more, in my experience. So, have you seen similar situations?
Well, yes, a couple, a couple comments on that. One thing that we look for in the work that we do is we look for great stories to tell, and you have an incredible story. You have a very unique lifestyle. You have a, a wonderful product to sell here. We're not, we're, we're not good at fixing, you know, broken-down things. You're not that. You are a vibrant, wonderful community with incredible assets, a great, I know you're saying you're isolated, but it is a great location. There's a lot of positives about this community. And, and from a marketing standpoint, I get very excited when I see all of the, the potential for the message for this community. It's, it's, it's very, very positive. As far as being isolated, there, there are many other things that people are looking for in their retirement life than just an Outback restaurant. You know, I think that there is, we do a lot of work in Hilton Head Island, for example. We have an office in Hilton Head, and there's a lot of golf and a lot of private communities, and we help a lot of them. A lot of people say Hilton Head's extremely isolated, because it's, you know, seventeen miles off the interstate, it's an island all by itself. But people love, have come to love the destination because of the lifestyle that it offers. So, but yeah, it's nowhere near an airport, it's nowhere near any reasonable city, it's, you know, it's, and it's literally an island out in the ocean, so. But, you know, two-point-three million people a year come to visit that beautiful place. I think you have a lot to offer here. There's a lot of good story in this place that can be turned to a positive message for people. Not, you know, not the least of which is the incredible value, you know, that, that living here affords you. I mean, you have a great, you have a great value proposition, and even at, at the highest level, at a very exclusive, private, close community, everybody going into the retirement, you know, time of life is looking at economics, you know, and it's, it's important to everybody. So I think that is where, that's one of the things you excel at. And you have a great location. I mean, you have so much available within a very short distance from here, big cities, world-class entertainment up the road, and, but yet you get to enjoy the quality of life that Sun and Lake offers. And I think it's a wonderful story. I think there's a lot to, to be out there. And I think what you'll start to see as our efforts roll out over time, is you'll start to see that word-of-mouth maybe not be the only way people are coming here. You're going to start to see a lot of new faces. They're saying, wow, you know, I saw your ad, you know, back home, and I was really intrigued, and I came down to visit you, and I think you'll see more of that.
Yeah, and those are all the reasons that we're all here.
Right.
But it's not the reason we came here. We came here because our friends were here.
Right, yes.
So it's just a little bit unique, okay. One other thing, and this is the right time, but because of the sunshine law restrictions and our inability to legally communicate outside of this forum, we normally appoint a, a board contact, if you will.
Sure.
And I would hope Neil would be the guy for that.
Okay.
So that you and Tanya and everybody involved knows that if you need board support for whatever, he's your guy. So, is that okay with you, Neil?
You got a question?
I'm sorry.
You already have, you already have work to do. I love it. This is an efficient process. I like this. The guy gets sworn in, and he's already got responsibilities.
Before we go, I got one more question.
Go ahead.
I got one more question for you. In looking at the, I'm not trying to pick on you here. In looking at the scope of services that we listed in the, I don't know what you call it, the original bid, one of the details of the bid that we were looking for, on the website, I'm going to come back to the website, what we asked for, you didn't give us. Was there a reason for that?
What, what specifically are you referring to?
We asked for an all-encompassing website to be redone. That was, that was under the creative development production and web redesign.
That was phase two, and you only did phase one.
And I was just, I was just curious, was there a reason why you opted not to do that, or?
I wasn't aware that the desire was to rebuild the entire Sun and Lake Improvement District website.
That's what it says.
Is that what's this?
Are you talking about combining all the different URLs and stuff, or?
Yeah.
I, I think there's an effort.
I don't have to, it was not, no, it was not an intentional reason. We just, we're, we're marketing.
I was just wondering if it was for monetary purposes because of the guidelines that we gave you on that, on that side.
Yeah, well, you know, our, our lane is marketing. You know, we're all about story and marketing, and presenting your community in a compelling and exciting way, how the people, you know, building your website out would not be a core competency of ours, like paying your taxes and all those, those issues are not kind of what we do. We have built, I mean, we, you know, we built the website for the college, and we built tremendous websites, but there are many multiples of the costs that you guys were indicating you were looking for in the marketing budget. To rebuild your Sun and Lake Improvement District website is a significant undertaking that goes well beyond the scope of what we're deciding here. We kind of, we're trying to be budget-friendly and sort of, we have a lot of experience here, and I knew if I put a, you know, seventy-five thousand dollar number for a website in there, it probably wouldn't have got us real far in the, you know, the bidding process. And I don't think that's what you need. I think, it seems to me that the Improvement District website seems to work well for what it is, for, you know, community activities, and, and for the functional things that it does, I think it works well. The need from our professional viewpoint is from the marketing side, from the storytelling and emotion side, and that's really what the need was. So that's what we proposed in there, to, so when people land, when they, they respond to one of these beautiful ads they're going to see, and they land on a welcoming marketing site first, before we send them to your Improvement District site. So that was kind of our thinking on that.
Okay, thank you.
But we could certainly put together a full proposal for rebuilding the website. But I think you'd want, you'd almost want that to be a separate process. I don't think, those don't generally go hand in hand.
A separate process?
Yeah.
Just to do the website? That's a good idea. I like that idea.
Yeah.
Well, that was my idea.
Yeah, there you go.
What we have works pretty well for what it is.
Yeah, I think it does. I agree. I agree.
But aren't we doing some things internally to try to combine domains and URLs and, I thought when...
We're having, we've talked about that internally, so there's still a lot more discussions that we need. We want to do more research. Is bringing everything into one site really the best option for us? So we're doing a lot of research internally before we're even ready to, I, I think when we put that out there in the bid, it was, you know, we, we had this vision of the entire website, but there's, there's a lot of components, and the government website especially is a very large, large website as well. So we still have to have those internal discussions.
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay, any public comment or question?
Tom Costley, resident and member of the Golf, Golf Club here in Sun and Lake. There's only one or two of us in this room that remember eight years ago when we went through the same exercise. At the time, we were, I guess, riding, when we started that program, we were riding the wave of the growth of population in Florida. I'm curious to know what your impression is of our timing now. When that program got underway, things were cooking. By the time it was supposed to start producing results, we were dead in the water. The initial budget for that program started at a, a online and marketing program for one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar budget for the initial investment in that. There was an additional one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in the budget for welcome center and marketing capability within the district. The program included flyover videos, and it included, the initial program included a marketing manager for the district, which we did hire at a cost of seventy-five thousand a year. When the, when the, when the program died, we kept the marketing director, but we renamed the department Community Services. And that's where Oriels function, Ariel's function came to be, because we had a, we had a good person that was very valuable that we wanted to hang on to. So we grew our staff. That came out of that program. The program included ads in Golf Digest, it included print media, it included mailing, it included email lists. It, they identified where our market area concentration should be, which included Southern Ontario, the Upper Midwest, New England. It was all based on historical data of what, how Sun and Lake came to be and where we all came from. So, I just, I throw this out now, this was like eight years ago that this all took place. And all of that is in the district's archives. And I'm just going to suggest that if any research needs to be done, we ought to take a look at, at what our experience has been with this. We're talking fifty thousand dollars a year. To me, that, that's not, that's not even a start. With what you projected here, are you talking phases one, two, three, and four in that number, or is that just for phase one? All four phases. Well, that's interesting. So, the other thing we need to keep in mind is the fact that there might be a delay from the time this program generates any income to the district in terms of offsetting the cost. It's an upfront investment, a very large upfront investment. And legend, the gentleman that was in here that presented that first marketing plan, what's, what's, Global Golf, they estimated that as communities like us would normally be investing two to four percent of our total budget in marketing. Our total budget runs about ten million bucks. We, that number, we're talking two-hundred, four-hundred thousand a year for marketing. If we get two years invested in this before we start getting a return, that's a half-million bucks. And we did that. We did that eight years ago. So, just so that everybody here understands that, we're talking real money if we're going to do an effective marketing program that gets results. The other thing we're up against is the fact that when we do start getting results, every new home generates seven-hundred dollars a year to the district coffers, and then maybe more money if they join the golf club. But those, that's what we're looking at with this, and I suggest that there, that some research be done by everybody on the board and the district staff, all of whom are new. Most, most, we're not here when this all took place. That there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of history there that we ought to keep in mind and try to avoid if we did make mistakes at that time, try to avoid them as we go forward. try to avoid them as we go forward. I am curious to hear what your feeling is about the market as it exists, the timing right now.
Yeah, a couple of things. Wow, that's really important information. And I think absolutely we need to look at what was done. The one thing that's changed dramatically in those eight years is the dependence we now have on digital devices. The ads in Golf Digest, those tactics were very common 10 years ago. Today, not as much. If you look at some of those publications, Golf Digest has struck down there. Now, because most, most of what we need to do today does not have those high bars to take an ad out in Golf Digest. Our digital capabilities, we can target you on your mobile devices and know things about you today that, you know, frighten most people, they frighten me too. But we can reach your next generation of members through highly effective, highly targeted digital means today that are fractions of pennies, not hundreds of thousands of dollars for full-page print ads. The issue and the, and the, the good part about that is the full-page print ad, much like the billboard of downtown Orlando, you're going to a circulation of a magazine of many, many people, most of which, you know, may never move to Florida in their lifetime, but you're paying for all of that circulation. There's a lot of wasted circulation. In the digital world today, it's highly efficient, very effective. We can tell through your digital footprint what other members out there look like digitally and reach them with fractions of penny ads appearing on their phones and their computers and all very quickly and efficiently without a lot of that wasted circulation. Micro-targeting, one-on-one advertising, and that is, and that's, that space is changing, you know, literally year over year today. So those tactics, direct mail, for example, I don't have to send you a piece in your mail, I can hit you on your phone today for, you know, for a hundredth of a cent. Whereas in the past, I had to mail you something to your house for like a buck and a half with postage and printing and envelopes and all of that stuff and design. It was very expensive. So, you know, yeah, mailing to 10,000 people in New Jersey costs a lot of money, you know, and you might get a little return. The other thing on the digital thing today that's much different is we can turn it off and turn it on so fast. We can try an ad execution, deliver a couple hundred thousand impressions for two or 300 bucks and find out nobody's engaging with it and kill it. And we didn't, you know, we're not, we're not sunk for that full $123,000 ad in Golf Digest magazine number. So that's today.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I was going to say just thank you for all that information. That was good information to understand. So, does any, any more?
Thank you.
Questions?
Can we have some board discussion?
Sure.
I think we just did, didn't we?
I think we were mostly asking questions. I don't think we've had any discussion among the board. And since we can't talk anywhere but at the meetings, I think it's important to talk through some of the, the issues that we need to look at.
Is that on the board or?
No. You want to do that prior to voting on the motions?
I thought the motion was already on the table.
It is, but we haven't voted.
Well, I think we should have discussion before the vote.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay, my, my concerns that may have come out in some of my questions is, are we putting the, the cart before the horse here? Because there's some good things suggested in this proposal and for what it is, it's reasonably priced. My concern is that it's, it's going to come back and to be an effective program, it's going to cost us a lot more money. And we're really a government agency and there's certainly value in marketing, but there isn't going to be a return on the investment to the government agency for getting this marketing done. When a, when a city says we need to figure out how to market, they create a tourism board and try to find a way to fund the tourism board. So we've got the Highlands County Travel and Tourism that the county created to promote Highlands County. We don't really have the wherewithal to create our own travel and tourism. So now it's like, okay, how do, how do we get this marketing message out here? The, if I see a value in this, it's to focus our message. But I'm not sure that we're ready to, to launch a full-out marketing campaign. I think if we focus the message, we might be able to attract a large developer, which I think is the better, the bigger need that we have, so that the developer can fund the marketing. Because as, as was indicated, that's the normal process. The government agency usually doesn't do the marketing. The, the entity that has the most to gain from the marketing does the marketing. We might market the golf courses and the restaurant. We're not going to market the restaurant nationally. The golf courses, maybe there's some value to marketing internationally. But what we're really, the message I'm getting is what we're really trying to do is bring new residents into Sun and Lake, which benefits the district, but not in the way that a, a full-on marketing campaign is going to do. And the full-on marketing campaign is where we're going to get into the bigger expenses. If, if, if we're thinking that $50,000 a year is our marketing and that's up from last year, you're not going to get much for that. And spending money without really buying in is wasted money. So if, if the board feels that this is a good thing to do to get us focused, that's fine, but I'm not sure it's going to, I'm not sure we're ready to go into the kind of marketing campaign that focus is going to tell us we need. And I don't know if the, the company is interested in developing this first phase, if we're not really interested in developing a marketing plan that's going to cost us several thousand dollars a year.
I think there's two components and we've only talked about attracting new residents, but we also have the sunbirds or snowbirds rather that come down here. And the more of them that we can get here to play the golf courses, to pay us money to be able to play our golf courses, that's where the return is probably going to be as opposed to additional people who buy houses. So it's a, it's a two-pronged approach as far as I'm concerned. We, we need to, in essence, we sat here and done nothing or next to nothing for a long time. I think this is a minimal investment and I would be interested in seeing where they come with it. But, but we're, we got these guys that are disadvantaged in that they have no idea what Sun, they know where it is now because they've been here, but that's about it. And until they sit down and talk to us and the residents and figure out what we need to go, need to attract, they can't really tell you and they can't really help us. That's really the issue as far as I'm concerned. It's always the message, it's always the target and the targeted market. But until we sit down and go through that, we're not going to know. You buy an advertising agency based on their sales presentation. And as I said, if it works, it works and it's a long-term relationship. If it doesn't, you fire them, you find somebody else or you decide not to do it anymore. But until we do something, we're never going to get anywhere. That would, that would be my take on the thing.
And I kind of feel the same way, other than I, I know that at least Henry Delosier has given us promises of a developer, but that's down the line a little. But it's, I just want to start something to see if it works. And I have no problem if it doesn't work. We spent a heck of a lot of money and wasted more than this in trying. But we need to get, we need to get our community growing. And what we've done since I've been on the board has not been much. And Neil, when you mentioned Billy Casper and us, we have control of their budget next year. So if you want to use half of Billy Casper's budget to put in with us, we can do that, three of us. So, so there's a lot of, a lot of things going on. I personally would like to try it. We certainly have problems with 2,000 lots that are with the county, but that'd have to be worked out. And I think Tanya's trying to. But I'd like to start and try something instead of just not do nothing. So that's the way I feel about it.
Well, the big problem is the 2,000 lots. We can work something out with the county and then I think we have something that we can do. Right now, we got probably what, 21, 22 lots we can sell? Not even that many?
No, not that. Through the county they can buy them, but not through the lots.
I know, but we got to work out a deal where we know we can get, if people are interested in the lots. We got, we got to figure out a way to make it happen.
A backend, yeah.
And, and until we do that, I don't think, I don't think it works. Now, to find out what it would cost us down the road, I don't feel like wasting 30,000, but if my fellow board members agreed that was, they'd like to find out, I would support that. But without having an agreement with the county, or something worked out with the county, we're going to fall on our faces, period. It'll be a waste of money.
Okay, we don't know what we can accomplish with the county in terms of our marketing strategy for these lots. But if we don't have some simultaneous activity, we're not going to do anything or start anything for another year. And that would be, I think, a shame. So again, for this amount of money, if this gets us some kind of an effective marketing tool on the internet, which we don't have today, the ability to let Ariel's activity around the, the electronic side of it, the social media side of it, and integrate that, there have to be some pluses there. There have to be some opportunities, however small. I mean, if it's 10 people or 15 people, that's 10 or 15 we wouldn't have had otherwise. So my position would be, take this first step and simultaneously continue to try to work out different terms with the county on these lots that they're willing to sell. Hopefully gain some, make some progress there. And when they're ready to hit the ground running, hopefully we'll be in a position to say, here are the options in terms of what you might buy. And the other thing is the existing home market, it's pretty tight right now, but that's always going to be there to some extent. And the new people that come down and decide they might want to live here and buy a home will have property to look at, not, not what we'd like them to have, but at least something. So if I were to vote right now, I would say, yeah, I think we should take this step and keep all the other activity going to hopefully better position us when we hit the road to the ground. And that would be my position.
All right, let's get it over with.
Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hotelling?
No.
Supervisor Siegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
No.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
And let me clarify, I'm happy to sit and work full-on on the intent of doing and getting it done well. So my no vote doesn't mean I'm not willing to work with these people. I think they offer some good things and I'm happy to work with them.
Okay, Resolution 2019-01-1, or slash 11-03, a resolution of Sun and Lake Sebring Improvement District to approve the recommendations of the Assessment Appeal Committee. Homer?
Good morning, Supervisors. As mentioned in the resolution, this is a request for the approval of the recommendations from the Assessment Appeal Committee that met on December 7. There was a total of 12 appeals that we received and they ranged from personal hardships to land use all the way down to just assessment questioning. Of the 12 appeals, we are recommending, the committee is recommending one approval and 11 denials. The one approval I'd like to talk about just a little bit, just to give you some background, it was submitted by Jose and Norrie Martin of 6255 Columbus Boulevard. Their appeal, the nature of their appeal was regarding unified rates for acreage and the lots that were behind the residence that were not on a road that would be considered unimproved. So at the current, during the current assessment process, they were being billed the 350 improved rate because they were unified. His request was for that rate to be reduced to the 140 unimproved because it was behind his home, off a road, and really not considered as an improved property. So we did request for that, the recommendation is for that to be approved. We are also recommending that that same consideration be provided to the other, there's three other properties that fall in the same category, that they be treated as well in order to keep everything consistent across the board for those properties. One of the denials that sparked a little bit of conversation was submitted at a property of 4504 Calatraven Avenue. This property owner submitted appeal three years in a row. The last two years, their appeal has been approved. This year, the recommendation is a denial. The appeal, the nature of the appeal was no visibility of the golf course and therefore they should not have to pay the golf course additional assessment. Some of the conversation that came and transpired was a lot of the properties on Turtle Run, which fall into a similar nature and therefore still pay for the golf course assessment. So the determination of the committee was to kind of look at this in a more comprehensive district-wide standpoint to really determine what is considered a golf course property and, you know, what constitute them paying the additional fee in order to make it consistent across the district versus one property owner based on the appeal. So this is probably something that we'll bring back to the board through discussion to look at the comprehensive state of what constitute a golf course lot and paying that additional maintenance fee. And then another denial was 4875 US 27 North. The nature of that appeal that's being suggested to be denied is some of their property was deemed uninhabitable, unusable by swift mud due to certain restrictions. So it could be water issues. There was another appeal that said they had a retention pond inside their, inside their property limits. And that's being recommended to be denied as well, just because there's really no effect on the assessment itself. You guys all did receive all the appeals with the supporting documentation. So if there's any questions on the appeals, I can try and help. And Mr. Brooks did serve on that committee as well and can speak to some of those appeals.
Do we need a motion in a second?
Yeah, I was going to, motion to approve.
Second.
I just have a, one comment on that. I'll go along with the recommendation, but I, I did notice that Ray asked for us to look at the golf course lots. And I think that's a great idea. So I would hope that we can get together at one of these meetings and discuss, discuss that, to actually find out what golf course lots mean and why we're charging them 70 bucks. Now, I, I always thought it was to clean between the golf course and their, their property to keep it mowed. Well, there, and some of these lots that we're talking about, I think we're, I don't think we should charge them because we're not made, we have no extra maintenance fee, period, on some of these. But it's, I don't want to discuss it now, but I, I'd like to bring it up. But I, I agree with, I was on that committee one time, three years ago or four, so I'm just happy to, we got that. Thanks for your hard work on that.
Other board comment?
One additional comment. There are situations where some of the multiple, multiple units don't really have a golf course view. So if you start that stuff as in the past, for example, there's a lot of the Pink Palace because of the angle, they couldn't see a golf course unless you took down a whole, that whole swamp down through there. So you got to be careful what you do and what you say on that situation because they're paying the 70 bucks as well. In addition, we're not really maintaining the perimeter, call it, deer run as we have in the past. I don't really think 70 bucks is particularly appropriate in a lot of cases. I'm paying it, you're going to, I mean, I'm part of the, I'm part of the rough. You couldn't quit mowing mine. And I'm not whining about it, that's fine. But just, it's not really an issue of, it's more proximity to the golf course than it is view. And it's also not a question of what's it costing you to maintain it. And that's kind of the way it's been sold in the past and that's not really the case.
Now, we have to make a couple of decisions here. I don't mind missing something, right?
Well, as of right now, the, the vote would be just Well, as of right now, the, the vote would be just to go with the consensus of the committee, so one approval and eleven denials.
But the consensus of the committee was that we would bring it to the board, this, unlike the sixty-two fifty-five Columbus, we would bring it to the board because of similar properties like it.
Correct. So, you guys, today, the recommendation in the memo is for all the other three properties on Columbus to also receive the same benefit. So, that's included in this memo.
We're all agreeing to that.
That's the motion, correct.
Yeah, that's the motion.
And like I said, during the, during this year's budget process and assessment, you know, setting the assessment rates, again, we'll have this discussion on the unified rates and the golf course assessment to see if we can come up with a better determination and criteria as to what constitute unified and golf course lots.
Any other questions for board? Any public comment?
Is this general public comment, uh, for the end of the meeting, or?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Chrissy?
Supervisor Hotteling?
Yes.
Supervisor Siegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Okay, add-on items?
None.
Petitions in communication?
None.
Staff reports?
Sure, I'll go first. Um, finishing December, I have, uh, the rule in my December first draft kind of in my hand as of this morning, so December, I, I kinda mentioned it in my GM report. Um, we had that cold spell in the middle, couple of weeks, and, uh, down on green fees, but up in some other areas, we kinda tending to be kinda right on budget, so actually, it looks like the revenues are, are beating last year, but not quite up to budget, but very, very, very close. Um, expenses are even lower, so it's really very strong. Um, I need to go through it really as of today. There, there, I've kinda been hard on Earl and a few of these guys about spending any money, so I, there's a few accruals that are, are you gonna really kinda just hit in another period? But, uh, actually, really good. Right now, we're thirty thousand dollars better than budget and better than last year, so really quite good to the bottom line. Uh, EBIT is really quite strong. January, um, we've had really some of the best stretch of weather that we had, that we've had in a long time for this time of year. Um, we're way up. Uh, January looks really strong. January tend, just tending, tends to be a backloaded month where the earlier part, people still, still aren't back from being up north, and they're arriving kind of a little bit more every single day, so January will tend to even build. So, um, we've been quite busy, and we're gonna continue to get busier. So, the projections are January's gonna be a, a really strong month. My challenge is really a, a lot of those green fee revenues and some of the food and beverage revenue that we're up is to, is to make those monies hit the bottom line and not eat them up with extra expenses and extra labor. So, that's, that's kinda what I'm working on now. Um, Sunday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, uh, Mr. Rycroft from Billy Casper will be here. He's our inspector and compliance guy, so we're going through the Billy Casper audit here in the next few days, so, and it's kind of everything, from compliance to procedures to cash handling, to safety, to just about everything. So, it's just part of what Billy Casper kinda does, and, uh, um, I've, I've really been busy the last several days really preparing for that audit, but, but he'll be here, and if you'd like to meet David, I'll kinda make that happen. He's a great guy. Um, what else? Uh, Sunday sales. Um, as many of you know, the ability to sell liquor on Sundays is just the same as all the days during the week. So, before, we weren't able to sell it, uh, past, uh, up until one o'clock. Now, we can sell it, sorry, as early as seven in the morning. So, um, right now, it's just gonna affect the beverage cart, but we're kinda talking internally about kinda how we're gonna start treating that, 'cause rev, the revenues, that tends to be ten, fifteen percent of our revenues when we do lunches like that, so it, it may be enough that we might decide to start doing some brunches, and probably, you know, an à la carte type brunch menu, and start serving some breakfasts on Saturdays and Sundays. So, you'll see that real soon, and kinda coming up in the next newsletter, but Kevin and I are working on doing that right now. So, I think, uh, that's kinda where we're leaning right now, is, is starting to open up both days, on Saturday and Sunday, and doing some type of smaller à la carte brunch menu with maybe one or two during peak season where we do some kind of big, you know, one of my big events. So, that's, that's all good news. Um, and again, I guess, I guess everybody knows about the line break we've had. We had to shut the restaurant down last night, so we really, uh, we had ninety reservations and a whole bunch of golfers coming in, so it was, uh, it was, it was gonna be a, a very, very busy night, so, right now, we're, obviously, we're under, under a boil order, and, um, working on that today. Anything for me, questions? We'll be up to work on it after, yeah, yeah, till, probably till Monday, until they tell us we're okay to go.
I, I have a request, if we could, 'cause I know we're gonna be talking about the restaurant down the road, and what I'd like to have from you guys is, uh, you're envisioning what the restaurant is, and what, if anything, do you wanna do to change it? I don't, am I explaining that correctly? How do you?
No.
No? You know how there's conversation all the time about, do we wanna have, uh, fast foods? Do we wanna have sandwiches? Do we wanna have, you know, great dining? And, you know, the board, once upon a time, we talked very briefly about, we should make it this, you know, try and decide and?
Well, I can certainly make recommendations, but really, that's, that's that needs to come from you guys, yeah.
Yeah, but I'd like to know where you guys, where you and Kevin or whomever, would like to take the restaurant, so that we, as the board, can, uh, agree to it, or say, well, you know, we think this is the way we should be going.
Okay.
We need to start at someplace, and I think you guys would be the good place to start.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm done. I, I just have one question that goes back to a little bit of what Tanya and I talked about yesterday, 'cause I was meeting with her when the whole water incident happened, but I'm hoping if, if there were ninety reservations that we lost, that, uh, there is some recompense from the perpetrator of the damage.
We're gonna be having those conversations with our attorney, yes, sir?
Yeah, I guess, if you're saying loss revenue should be part of our claim, is that?
Loss revenue should be part of our claim.
I agree a hundred percent with that.
Probably be a really good idea to, if we can identify those reservations, to give them a discount the next time they come in. Some recompense, because, I mean, sure, they didn't know, so I'm sure they came and were told, no, we can't help you.
We called everyone who was moving around, and the entire golf course, and told everybody on the property, just in case you need to change your plans, just for lunch now, so we did everything we could.
Good. That's great. But I'd probably give them a discount anyhow.
Did you have a reservation, Dan? One other question?
Did you have one of them?
Were you able to, uh, determine anything about those five-month seasonal memberships? 'Cause they're still down. Did you figure out what might be happening? The five-month seasonal memberships, you know, they, they were down about fifteen or sixteen the last time, and it's only improved by one. And, and the other ones, you can figure out, the family has become singles, I mean, you, you can see the math is working out right, but that one's still unexplained. Have you got any feel for that?
No, I mean, let me, I don't know exactly what you're talking about, but let me, uh, let me look at it closer, and we'll talk.
Okay, thank you.
Morning.
Start, Mr. Joe.
The break's been fixed. I mean, obviously, you know that already, so, um, uh, we sit out here till eleven o'clock last night fixing it. Um, matter of fact, Joe showed up about quarter of eleven and scared me walking down the road, uh, but we did get it.
I saw him, I catch you working.
Yeah, you did. Um, it's all been fixed. We were back out there five-thirty this morning for the traffic, and the contractor's on site right now, um, and hopefully, the road will be paved by Monday. Um, it was done by Comcast, they went right through our water line, a, a ten-inch water line, so there was a lot of water. Uh, Omar's people, Tanya's people from the office really, really, really did well with this. Uh, uh, we had people calling us, but at least they knew what was going on. Um, so, we're in pretty good shape right now. I was very happy with the traffic this morning. We met with the principal of the school, explained to him what happened, and, um, it, uh, really, for a break, went really well. And you have my reports, I don't know if you have any, any questions on my reports, but that's all I got today.
Um, I'm assuming there's a boil order notice out?
There is, yes, Joe.
Is that district-wide?
Yes.
Okay.
For now, yeah.
And that'll be for three days, two days?
Seventy-two hours. We're gonna try and make it back in order to get the rest of the land within that sample lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, just a couple of quick updates out, that are outside of the report that you guys got for the department. Um, we will be having our district-wide yard sale that's going to be happening on January nineteenth, so that's a Saturday. Um, my understanding, that's a, that's a common annual, uh, event that we hold, so we've had a lot of people ask about it, so that will be on the nineteenth. We do have new fitness classes. I know that that's something I had reported on previously. We've got, I believe, she, Megan teaches four or five new classes, um, here that, um, are available to fitness members, so that's at no cost to folks who are already signed up as a fitness member. Just a, a quick report, um, several months ago, we talked about ING, International Network for Golf, who is bringing in a conference that's being hosted at the Chateau Alonin Hotel and Conference Center, which was coordinated through the TDC, the Tourist Development Council, in May. Um, they're a group that focuses on, they're media-based conferences, they have product testing, educational workshops, golf tournaments, and networking sessions. They are actually gonna be at Sunland Lake on two different occasions, so their first day of golf is gonna be held at Sunland Lake, and they're also going to be hosting their demo lab here at Sunland Lake. So, one of the things that we did, as I, I reached out to ING to see if we had any opportunity to kinda get in front of them one more time, so we are going to be providing Sunland Lake branded totes, uh, that they can use for their wel, their welcome bags for conference members. So, when they check in and they're being handed their, um, welcome packet, their welcome bag, it's going to be in a Sunland Lake branded tote, so just kinda one more step to get the Sunland Lake name out in front of those folks, so, that's my update.
Do me a favor on your monthly reports, your charts, identify them.
I'm sorry, say that one, the charts?
Yeah, yeah, you got like two charts of how many people show up on the days, and I don't know what the charts are for. There's no identification.
A header, he's talking about, just put a header at the top of the charts. Got it, no problem.
Thank you. General counsel?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, Tanya and I had a conversation with, uh, Stephen Braun of, uh, Hometown America. I think he was a vice president of Hometown America regarding the, uh, district's, you know, ongoing, uh, contract with, uh, Tanglewood. Um, I'm doing some additional research based on that conversation. We'll probably have something to bring to the board in the next couple of meetings. Uh, I think at the very least, we're going to do some sort of amendment that, you know, has, because the, the contractor we're operating under now is under Juniper Bay, so it really is gonna identify the current, you know, the current owner of Tanglewood, so that, and, and that it's an ongoing contract. Um, Unit Twelve foreclosure, uh, the, with, uh, DFC, that fifteen-hundred-plus property foreclosure that we're looking into, uh, there's been no response to the letters, other than one of the banks, uh, one of the three banks that, uh, has mortgage on that property contacted us and told us that, you know, they don't have any interest in that mortgage anymore. Said, well, that's news to me, 'cause according to the public records, you still do. So, uh, at this point, probably what we're, at the next meeting, we'll probably be doing is bringing it to the board for, uh, permission to move forward with the foreclosure process. Uh, that's, we've worked it out, it's gonna be a flat, fat, flat fee foreclosure for those fifteen-hundred-plus lots, and we'll be looking for fifty percent of the money upfront, which is gonna be to the tune of sixteen thousand dollars. So, but my understanding is that's all in the budget? Do we confirm that? Okay, well, I think it is, but we'll check into it to make sure. And, uh, we'll be talking about code enforcement later on today.
Okay, for any other benefit, the, the foreclosure you're talking about, the, talk, talk about the location, what it is, and?
The one over there is next to, it's that giant section of land that's over there next to Hill Gustad Middle School, and that, you know, it, there, the lots are, uh, eighty by, eighty, fifty by a hundred, sorry, they're, they're basically mobile home lots, uh, but, you know, based on their, their size and the number of them, uh, it doesn't appear that the county would ever anytime soon be doing tax deed sales on those, and so we've got the ability to foreclose on them, and since, you know, ninety-five, ninety-seven percent of it is owned by one developer, uh, we talked to the clerk of courts, and we can all, we can foreclose on all fifteen-hundred-plus of them with, through one foreclosure.
Well, if, if we don't have the money in the budget, we can certainly find it.
We did include their costs. I don't know if you said thirty-two thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, for thirty-two thousand dollars to get that, that's not, do it.
All right, so, yeah, we'll be bringing, that'll be, that'll probably be on the next, the next agenda. Or another, we'll see.
Okay, thank you. Tanya?
Just a couple of project updates. On Wednesday, we had a mandatory pre-bidding for contractors interested in submitting bids for the Kitchen and Linni project. Uh, it was held at the Island View at ten o'clock, and we had three contractors show up for that meeting, and then one kitchen equipment supplier show up. Uh, the bid openings for that project are January thirty-first at the district office, uh, at two o'clock. So, those are the, that's the information on, on that project. Uh, the Deer Run Pump Station has been advertised. Bids are due January twenty-second, and the Phase Three Drainage Project, uh, the bids have been advertised for that and are due January twenty-ninth. So, some big projects this month, and then, uh, those projects will be coming to you in February for, for approval.
Any finished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment?
Tom Coste, um, I would like to request that, uh, consideration be given for a topic for discussion at the next board meeting. Our next meeting is a combination of, uh, a regular board meeting, plus, uh, the, within the, within the meeting itself, there's an adjournment, and the annual landowners' meeting takes place. Uh, I would like the discussion to be concerning the procedures that are used in Sunland Lake for filling vacated seats on the board. Um, the procedure changed about six years ago. The county changed our ordinance, uh, in a way that requires popularly elected seats to be done through the supervisor of elections office, as opposed to being run by the district itself, without, uh, the confines of, uh, the supervisor of elections and the Florida State Election Commission. Um, the result of that, maybe unintended, but one of the things that has happened since then has resulted in our current board. We have five members of the board who have never received even one popular vote to put them on this board. I don't have a problem necessarily with that, but the issue that, that I would like to see discussed among all of you is whether or not appointments to vacated seats should run for the full term of the seat being vacant, that was vacated, up to, up to a maximum of four years. We, uh, and I'm not trying to undo anything that's happened. Uh, this is, this is for future consideration. But we just, uh, Mr. Hotteling was just seated for a four-year term. Had that been the city of Sebring, or the city of Avon Park, or Highlands County, it would be till the next general election, which be, would be the next point at which a citizen would be able to vote on who's gonna be their representative on this board. Uh, we have annual landowner meetings where elections can take place every year, and we have a general election every two years. And I, I think it might have been an unintended consequence of the way the ordinance changed five or six years ago that has resulted in the fact that we have no popular voting on for anybody that's on this board now. Um, discussions have taken place. I've had preliminary discussions with one or two of you, um, and I've not, I'm not passing any word among the, the, whoever. any word among the, whoever I've talked to about this. Sunshine laws do, do get involved with this, but, so I, I've been investigated before for being a conduit between supervisors. And I actually had to give depositions, and I've always kept my skirts clean on that, and I understand the importance of that. But I would like to, I would like to hear what the board and what district staff's feelings are about whether or not it's appropriate to have board appointments being made for a four-year term, even bypassing a general election where the public would have an opportunity to vote. Preliminary discussions have already taken place downtown about this, too, among the supervisor of elections office and et cetera. But I think, I believe it's gonna be in our hands. It's just whether or not it's the right way to do it. Hopefully, we can give the public a little more input to how things take place with that regard. Thank you.
Tom, just, that was my only topic for the board-to-board discussion today, so yeah, I agree with what you're saying, we need to relook at that and maybe try to adopt something similar to what the county commissioners do. You know, put a limit on it. I think they appoint a position that is 28 months or less tenure.
Uh, yeah.
Anything longer than that, they appoint to the next general, so.
It goes through the state election commissioner's office.
Right, but they don't appoint their own commissioner.
No, the county does not appoint their own.
Right. So yeah, I agree, it needs to be looked at.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Could we also have David take a look at the legalities and what it takes to change that policy?
Yeah, my recollection is that it actually applies, you know, what the county ordinance actually mimics the Florida statute, as far as for, you know, the type of governing body that we are, so, but I, I mean, I'm happy to look into it.
I sent that information to Mr. Branson, so I can send it to all of you. When I do that last month? I send it to you in email, so I can send it to the rest of the board if you're interested in looking at it.
Yeah, I would be.
Okay, I can do that.
I might note that I was appointed for three months, Tom, and elected last, for last year.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, discussion to and from the board?
Are we gonna talk about the next meeting, capital? Anybody know? Are we planning on doing that?
Not the next meeting. It'll probably be the first meeting. Not the next meeting, it'll probably be the first weekend in February.
I won't discuss any votes on any major products or projects until we have a capital conversation and agree on what we're doing.
About what part of the capital? You're talking about the five- and 10-year plan, or are you talking about for current year's business?
We were gonna discuss capital before we spent a nickel on capital projects. And then I think I brought this up last September. Everybody said, "It's okay, we'll do it."
But again, my-
I expect it to be done, otherwise-
Again, my question is, the things that are budgeted and approved in the capital arena, are you including that?
Absolutely. Because we said we were gonna look at all five years.
Right, the current year capital is not included in a five-year plan.
Correct.
Do you under, we understand that?
I understand that.
Oh, okay.
We said that we were gonna look-
We did.
At the five-year plan.
At the five-year plan.
But until my staff, until Billy Casper's staff, until my staff can have an opportunity to talk through some of these major issues, we're not prepared to present it to the board of supervisors. So we, we need a little bit more time, and we're looking at maybe the-
We talked about this in September.
Correct. So we, we, we're looking at maybe the first meeting in February.
Okay. You all let me know when you're doing it. Don't expect me to vote on anything, and if it comes up, I'm not voting.
You have to.
There's nothing that would come up-
I don't do anything.
You have to say.
And I'll walk out of here. That's bullshit. Excuse my French.
Mr. Brooks, there's nothing in the five-year plan that would be voted on. Current, our current budget is where we are now, but what we're doing is we would have a workshop based on the next five years. The workshop would not-
The next five years includes this current year. The whole thing that we discussed was-
No, it doesn't.
We're gonna spend $2.5 million in the hole this year.
The five years-
I don't, I wanna know what we're gonna do next year and the year after-
Right.
-before I spend the $2.5 million this year.
Right, the five-year plan does not include the current year, because we're, we're moving on to, that's already been approved in the budget. The five-year plan, what we'll do is we'll-
Do I have to say it one more time?
Please.
There's two, we're going in the hole $2.5 million with the current budget. Correct, that's what's there. I am not gonna spend that $2.5 million until I know what's gonna happen next year and the year after. That's all I'm saying.
That'll be done during the budget process, so when we, we start budget-
I'm not waiting for the, we talked about this in September. Come on. Fine. I, I just don't understand what we're doing. I just wanna comment that any five-year plan that I agreed to, I might change it six months after I agreed to it.
It's a working document. It is a work in progress for us, yes.
I think what I'm hearing Mr. Brooks say is that the current budget is a working document as well, and he's concerned, even though we've put the budget together with a $2.5 million deficit, that he's not willing to vote on spending that $2.5 million until we know what we're doing in the future years, which is why he wants to look at the future years before we start voting on the current year actual.
That was good.
I understand that.
That's what I'm saying.
I was just making it clear that the current year budget has already been adopted, but it would not be included in the five-year plan. I was just trying to clarify that.
Okay.
I apologize for what I said before.
We'll forgive you this time. Any other board-to-board discussion?
I had a couple of things. Yesterday, Carl Wright, who was a member here and is a resident at Tanglewood, basically got a golf tournament, if you will, an outing with two members of, from Tangle, or two people from Tanglewood and two golf members, members of the men's golf association. I don't know how many people were there, it was probably, I don't know, 80, 60, 80, something like that. It was probably the first time I've ever met any of those people, and I thought it was very well-received on both sides, and it's probably something we should do more often, and we should give Carl a lot of credit for thinking of doing that. I never would have. It was cold, but it was fun, and it worked out well. Second thing, and I wanna preface this by saying, this does not, this does not reflect at all on Cliff, but I think we have an issue, or at least I have an uncomfortable situation with the Casper contract, in that Billy Casper Golf has paid a flat fee for doing what they do. There's no incentive in there for them to be efficient, there is no incentive in there for them to have fewer people than, than they have, or to not replant the front lawn of the clubhouse three different times and twice let it die. I don't think that's going to happen in the future, but I really think we should sit down and look at that contract and potentially amend it to better reflect efficiencies and better reward them for efficiencies that they can produce. As it is now, they're either here and we pay them, or they're not and we don't, and I really don't think that's, that's productive for us or for them. So I'd like to see that as a, as a future thought. In that same vein, and I don't know if the members of the audience got it or not, but we, I've been asking for a projection of what's gonna happen if we do the kitchen, if we spend the money to redo the kitchen, spend whatever number that is, as well as the lanai project. Without going into any specific detail and making sure I understand it properly, if I look at the lanai numbers that Cliff put together, the payback is about 24, 36 months, becomes very positive thereafter. So that's pretty much an easy sell for me, assuming that the issue I brought up at the last meeting is addressed, that we're not gonna make one big bill, one big room that if we, if we have Aunt Matilda's wedding, or whoever's wedding, then all of the golfers that come in have nowhere to go except the parking lot. We have to figure out how to accommodate not only our members and our residents, but also people that are playing golf and wanna come in and have a beer afterwards, or whatever they wanna do. But bottom line is, the numbers work there. On converse, the numbers on the kitchen really don't, assuming that Cliff is right, and it's something that, I, I can't reconcile in my own mind that that's a good business decision. That's from an economic standpoint. From the other standpoint, we have safety issues, we have ability to do what needs to happen, and we have future issues, so somewhere, there's gotta be some accommodation between those two situations, and we won't really know that until the bids come back in. But it makes me extremely uncomfortable looking at the numbers and the projections, and I just wanna, all of us be thinking in it in that same, same vein. There's an economic issue, there's an accommodation issue, we need to take care of the residents, we need to take care of the members, and we need to take care of people that are playing golf and wanna have dinner, or have a drink, or have a snack, or whatever, but, but boy, it's kinda hard to, hard to look at spending 900 grand, or whatever number there is, that's not gonna give us any return. So there's gotta be some type of an accommodation here some way. So that, those things concern me, the Casper contract and the whole restaurant issue. It's, I've said before, I'm not sure that we haven't gotten ourselves in a position where we've got somebody to design, we wanna, we wanna kill an ant, and we've got somebody to design a sledgehammer for us. It'll work, but isn't real efficient. So some way or another, we gotta figure out the efficiency of what we're getting ready to do. And I realize we got constraints with square footage and all that sort of stuff, so I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm saying we really need to look at this from a couple of different perspectives. I wish I knew the answer. I'm not sure there's an easy way.
Yeah, there's some board-to-board, Mike? Neil, Brad? Okay. We'll adjourn the meeting and go to the workshop.
Resess. Five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess. I know where you're going.
Resess. Then we'll do it. Not adjourn it, recess.
How long we think, how long we think the next part's gonna take? Right, the kids wake up?
I can't believe this is gonna be each, what's the teenagers waiting for?
Oh, I don't wanna leave during the meeting. Huh? So I can, I can cancel the call?
Congratulations.
Huh?
When you look at the history, did you see-
Code enforcement? So by way of introduction, Tanya, David, I don't know which of you-
You want me to take away? Okay, so Supervisor Branson and Tanya and I have been looking into the code enforcement issues, and, and it seems to me that there's, there's basically two, there's two, there's two major categories when it comes to the district's ability to enforce, to do code enforcement. There are violations that can be noticed, and there are citations that could be issued. Now, based on the definition of a citation, let me get to my notes here. Any district code enforcement officer is authorized to issue a citation to a person when, based upon personal investigation, the officer has reasonable cause to believe that the person has committed a civil infraction in violation of Section 9-102. 9-102 is all of our, the codes that the district has the ability to enforce. So for a citation to be issued, the, the district code enforcement officer has to personally see the, you know, the issue. Now, a district code enforcement officer is any employee of the district designated by the Board of Supervisors pursuant to this section, which is the minimum maintenance standard section, to enforce the provisions. So the board has the ability to appoint people to, you know, do, to issue, to be code enforcement, or, yeah, to district, be district enforcement officers. So the, based on my research, the violation, a violation, the difference between a citation and a violation is that a violation is something that can, that the district code enforcement officer doesn't necessarily have to see with the same eye. So if your neighbor across the street is parking their car on the grass at night, and you are tired of that happening, you take some pictures, you go to the district code enforcement officer, and you say, "Hey, you know, my neighbor keeps parking his car on his yard," and the district code enforcement officer can take that evidence, photographic evidence, and issue a violation, a written violation, saying, "Hey, you know, we reasonably believe that you are committing violations." The person can either own up to it and say, "Yes, that's correct, I have been doing that," and they can, or they can request a hearing. And they could, if they say, "No, I'm not guilty, it wasn't me, it was somebody else," you know, whatever, then they can request a hearing and go before a, the special magistrate, and the special magistrate will make that determination. Once, however, if a violation has been determined, either by them, by the payment of a fine, or the special magistrate agrees and says, "Yes, you know, I'm saying that you have been violated," then you've got a violation on your record, and any further violations don't require a time to cure. So if it, if you, basically if it happens again, we don't have to give you any, all the first, first time, you know, issues have to be said, "Okay, you have a time to cure." But after that first time, once you've, it's been determined that you've been cited or have been issued a violation, after that, there's no more time to cure, and that's basically it. You know, we, you could, the penalties can start accruing instantly. So the, one of the issues, you know, that has happened in the past is that the, the thought process has been that, you know, if I give them a, if I give them a notice and they cure it, then the process is start all over again. Well, that's true, the process starts all over again, but it doesn't start with another notice and a time to cure. So the, and then another issue is, is when it comes to citations, you know, with it requiring the district code enforcement officer to physically see the violation, I don't know, but I think we can count on the, one hand, the number of district code enforcement officers we have that are authorized to issue it. So the, who is our technically, is it just, is it Bob and, just Bob? Bob's our only district code enforcement officer. So unless the board wants to authorize other people to start issuing citation, Bob's the guy. If Bob doesn't see it, a citation can't be issued. Now, you know, we've got other people that do, you know, security that rides around, if security sees something, they can notify Bob, and Bob can go by and check later and see if it's there, but the, I don't think we wanna be in a position where we're having our security force that's providing evidence. I don't think we want our security force taking pictures of violations, giving them to Bob, and asking Bob to issue violations for stuff that they saw while they were doing our rounds. One of the other concerns that we have is potential, was selective enforcement. You know, if we're going to get to the part where we're going to be actively issuing citations, then we need to come up with a plan on how we're going to, I guess, patrol the district so that we can make a, so that we can't be accused of, of saying, hey, you know, there's every, you know, every day someone's driving down my street and they're issuing citations, you know, left to right for violations, that happens every day. If we've got a, if we've got a plan, you know, and while it may, I don't know if that's something we need to necessarily publish, but it definitely needs to be something that we document, so that if someone comes and says, "Hey, you're, you're, you're acting, you're doing selective enforcement," we can say, "No, we're not. Here's the, you know, here's our patrol plan," and, you know, if, if someone figures out what the patrol plan is, and they don't violate on those days, well, then we have to issue, you know, we can't issue citations, but the opportunity for violations are always there if we get someone that's willing to provide some evidence. The other issue is that we don't have the, the, the maximum, I think the only, the only guide that we have is a maximum fine. Like, the maximum fine that can be issued is like a $500 fine for citations. Violations, the special magistrate, if it ends up going to a special magistrate, a special magistrate can issue higher fines and ongoing fines, but citations cannot be more than $500. And so my recommendation would be to come up with a plan, this is just something I came up with, you know, I think it's there on the, on the memo, as some potential ideas for how, you know, we need to, all citations have to have a, have a chance to cure, at least for first time, for first-time offenders. So we need to figure out what's a reasonable time period to cure some of the violations. If it's, you know, obviously, we don't wanna, if someone's leaving their garbage cans out on the street, you know, that's a 24-hour cure, you know, you- out on the street, you know, that's a 24-hour cure, you know, you, you've left it out there beyond the prescribed time, you've got 24 hours to cure. We do, if they've, you know, if their lawn is overgrown, we probably want to give them more than 24 hours, you know, and if they've got, if they've got a improper structure on their property, they would wanna, probably wanna give them, you know, maybe a week or two to get that taken care of. So my recommendation would be the board probably needs to come up with a plan as to, you know, what reasonable times are to cure certain violations, and what the reasonable fines would be for those violations if they aren't cured. And I would recommend, you know, we have a, we have a price for a first-time violator, and we have a price for a repeat violator. As long as it's $500 or under, we're fine. The county's left it completely up to us.
But for clarification, the fines don't occur unless we put that person in front of the special magistrate?
Correct. No, 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 that's for, for citations, the citation can, you know, have, will have a dollar amount on it, it'll have a time to cure, and a dollar amount if it's not cured within that time period. The, if they, if the violator doesn't cure within that time period, they have the opportunity to pay 75, I think it's 75% of that fine, and just say, you know what, you know, it's, I don't wanna go, you know, I'm willing to just pay it, I'm admitting my guilt, and they, if they admit their guilt and pay, they get to pay a discounted rate. If they say, no, I'm not guilty, I want to go to the special magistrate, well, then they're gonna pay at least the fine that's been issued, that's on the citation, then they end up having to pay more, depending on if the special magistrate finds there's, you know, ongoing, you know, a potential ongoing violation.
Okay, so Bob can actually issue a document that imposes a fine?
Correct.
Okay, I didn't understand that.
But only after a first violation?
No, 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 there's the first violation, can all, the first violation will have a time to cure.
Right.
If they cure within that timeframe, yeah, yeah.
The time to time to cure, that's what you wrote down, that's what, these are your suggestions down here?
Correct. Just suggestions, but that's, I say, as, as an idea or a starting point for discussion. Because I think this is, this should become a policy.
You've got violations, and you got citations.
Correct.
So the citation...
Think of a citation as like a ticket.
After one violation, you wouldn't issue a citation the first time they ever did it.
No, you can, you can, because that's based on the personal, that's based on the personal observation of the, of the code enforcement, the enforcement officer. So it's, basically, you think of it like a ticket, you know, it's, so the first time I go by, and it's like, okay, well, you put your garbage cans out on Thursday, the garbage got picked up, and they're still sitting out there Sunday morning, you know, that's a violation. So the officer can go by and say, you've got 24 hours, you've, I've seen the violation, I'm looking at it with my own eyes.
Yeah.
Here, you've got 24 hours to cure it. If you don't cure it within the 24-hour period, you're gonna have to pay a $50 fine. If you, you know, if they don't cure within the period, they go, you're right, I didn't cure it within the time period, I understand that I'm gonna have to pay, but I, you know, I'm not going to take this to the special magistrate, so I'll pay 75% of the $50 fine, and I'm admitting my guilt, and now, I'm now a first-time violator. So if they take you to the special magistrate, they say, you know what, no, I'm not guilty, I'm gonna take you to the special magistrate, and I'm gonna argue my point. And the special magistrate says, well, you know, based on the facts and circumstances, I'm gonna say, no, you know, we're gonna say that you're not a violator, you know, that's up to the special magistrate, that's outside our hands. So, but they have that opportunity. The special magistrate says, no, you are in violation, then they're gonna have to pay the full amount of that fine.
But the second time, they would get a citation, and they, they owe the fine, period.
They owe the fine, they owe the fine, they, they don't get an opportunity to cure after they're a second, on the second time.
Right.
So once they've become a first-time violator, for that whole year, they're a first-time violator. And if any repeat, any other violation is a repeat violation, there is no opportunity to cure, and they may, they're potentially, they owe that fine, and they could, they have the opportunity to say, yep, no, you're right, you got me a second time, here's my 75%, I don't want to go to the special magistrate, or they have the opportunity to go to the special, they always have the opportunity to go to the special magistrate.
So what's a citation?
It's like a ticket.
I know, but you, what we're talking about is violations, am I right?
No, no, a citation, I mean, a citation, the only difference between a citation and a violation is the citation is seen with the, the code enforcement officer's own eyes, and he hands out a ticket, literally a ticket, to the violator, or posts it on their door, or, you know, gets it to them in some way.
But our, our practice, I guess, based on us, would be, we give you a violation, you fix it, you don't owe anything. Second time, you get a citation, or whatever number we want, but it seems to me we wind up chasing our tail. We give these people violations, they fix it, go back the next week, they've done it again, again, and again, and again.
We keep giving opportunities to cure.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what I really want to get stopped, is, we're spending a lot of time doing nothing, we're not doing nothing, we're spending a lot of time not getting any impact, and that's, that's what I really want to do.
So we don't use the citation process currently in our procedures, I want to make that clear, because it is authorized by the ordinance, but we, we use a violation process. So 95% of the time, 99% of the time, the violators, they correct it, but then we have those repeat violators that are the issue. So we use a violation process, and then the, the special magistrate will assess the liens. But the citation process is, is something that is allowed by our ordinance, but we, I just want to make that clear, we don't use that currently in our procedures, but it is an option. So that's what we're talking about today.
So in, in the month of November, if I looked this up, right, the code enforcement violations, they were 102.
Okay.
So he would be writing 102?
Arguably, he could. Citations, citation.
102 citations, if he wanted to.
If he physically, if he saw them himself.
If he saw them himself, so...
And if they weren't first-time offenders?
No, they're saying, first-time offenders, still, the first, the only difference between a first-time offender and a repeat offender is a first-time offender has an opportunity to cure. A repeat offender, second-time violator, for the same, for the same, for the same violation, you know, so if you, if you, if you leave your garbage cans out, and, you know, beyond the prescribed time, and you're violated for that, then you violated that provision. You're, you're a first-time violator for garbage cans, which means if you violate again for garbage cans, you're a repeat violator, you do not get an opportunity to cure it. You are immediately responsible for a fine.
That's not the way we're doing it.
He's describing it what's allowed in here, we don't currently handle it that way.
So, have we asked, I mean, Bob, are you okay with this? Can you do all this?
We, all we're doing right now is just talking through this, this opportunity of fines, and applying, but we're talking about what we can do, we, we haven't had those discussions internally about what we're gonna do if, you know, if we decide to move forward with some citations. I mean, that's something we're gonna discuss.
The only thing I would say, based on what you recommended, is I don't like the range. I think we should have a number.
And I'm fine, yeah, I'm fine with it.
So we don't put anybody in a position of saying, well, why did you do, you know, why did you go this short of the range, or this, like, you know, max it out?
Yeah, we could do a first-time violation, a second-time violation, or just a, just a dollar amount, a flat dollar amount.
Yeah, I think a flat dollar amount's a better way to go, personally.
Well, but again, I think the, the range provides the ability to say, all right, now you've done this to the point where we're gonna issue a fine, and we start with a minimum, if we have to do it again, and, and that would, that could be quantified, you can say, okay, it's 250 the first time you do it, but if you do it again, it's gonna be 450.
Well, if you spell it out.
Yeah, if you spell it out, then you eliminate any...
And that may be the easiest way to do it, is that first violation is this dollar amount, and second, repeat violations are this dollar amount. You know, that's, we, we, as long as it is $500 left...
We can come back to the board with that information, yeah, we can come up with something.
But do we want to find everybody the first time without...
No, no.
No.
They have an opportunity to cure.
They're gonna have an opportunity to fix it in a prescribed period of time. If they do it again the 31st day, then we're going back and find them.
Right, and that's where we run into the problem, because it's the...
Right. Okay, here's the thing, the code provides for most of this as it's written. We don't have to revise the code, we just have to enforce the code. Okay?
So you guys come to us with a recommendation, and we'll approve it.
And that's the, the other, the other good thing about the citation system is that it, it allows us to, you know, it, it doesn't require anything to be mailed specifically, and it gives us the ability to, you know, get renters. You know, people that are, that are renting, you know, anybody that's renting under a, what I would consider a reasonable lease, that lease is gonna contain a provision that says that you've gotta, you know, comply with the laws of the area, and, which means that any violation that does not, that is not timely cured by the renter is gonna get mailed to the landlord, because, as the property owner. And then, that person, that renter may have, may be in violation of their lease, which is where they don't want to be.
Let me put down the hammer, I got one more clarification.
On the citations, do those become, do we have to file liens on the property, or how will we assess those and track to make sure we receive payments? Because right now, the special magistrate issues a lien, which comes on the property, and we get it through the assessment system, but on these citations, will they become against the property?
Yeah, because if, if the cite, if, if the citation is not paid, then it's gonna go to the special magistrate. So we're gonna issue a citation, and that citation's not paid, then it, then it goes to the special magistrate.
And we file, we're gonna file a lien for every citation?
We have the ability to do that.
Yeah, we have the ability.
And again, that's already there.
But I guess, I guess my question is, on a renter, what's the recourse if a renter moves out, we're, we can still go after the property owner?
Well, yeah, once it goes, once it goes to the special magistrate, we have to send notice to the property owner.
The property owner has the ultimate liability, because renters throw them away, that's the property owner's problem. He has to control his renters, and he won't do it unless we create an incentive, and that's what we're trying to do.
And also, the incentive is to, you know, pay it. You know, you're getting a 75, you know, it's, it's, it's being discounted down to 75% of the, of the, of the cost, you know, if you pay it and say, I don't want to go to the special magistrate, I'll pay it, you know, I'm guilty, I'll pay it.
I'll give you another question. If we do that, okay, and they don't pay, okay, how long does, so, what's our, how long does that stay on?
How long what?
That, that fine stay on that property, I mean, if I know that's something that we...
We file a lien that stays there for years.
But how long does it stay, 20 years?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, right now, it stays 20 years.
I would assume this would be no different, a lien's a lien.
Correct.
So 20 years ago, when we, we sent someone, it's still on here, but after 20 years, it's on?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's somebody, yeah, it's, yeah, if you've always got the ability, once, it gets, it's gonna get recorded in the public record at some point, yeah. It's not something we have to track.
I don't know that we've ever filed a lien for code violations.
I mean, don't...
We have, okay, okay. Okay, good, I'm glad. But it's, it's all about, it's not about creating teeth, it's about biting with the teeth we already got, I mean...
And usually, those liens are on foreclosed properties. We have people that are not living there, and those liens, once the special magistrate assesses that lien, it's normally in a foreclosed property. So, so it's not, in the past, I mean, that's, that's typical.
And there's a case where...
He wished the lien, I mean, that's...
Potentially, yeah.
If the special magistrate says, you know, you've got 30 days to fix it, and we're gonna find you 500 every other 30 days, pretty soon, you're in a position to foreclose yourself.
Go.
And the upside of that is, the landlord properties are not homesteaded, so there is nothing in the way of that lien being enforced. Correct?
Correct.
I'm not trying to do David's job here, I just want to make sure you know.
Just wanted to clarify, on, on the second offense, are you saying that's a rolling 12 years, or are you saying it's 12...
I have, yeah, I'll have to check if it's, if it's, if it would be, I don't know, that we, we might just say a calendar year, you know, I don't know if, if, at some point, we're gonna, it's gonna become cumbersome for us to main, you know, worry about all of, all of that stuff. And, like I said, the person always has the ability to go to the, the special magistrate and say, you know, I, you know, I, that violation, my first violation was, you know, 16 months ago, I shouldn't be, this shouldn't be considered my second violation.
Well, that's my...
Yeah.
It should be a rolling 12 months to be effective, and that can be managed pretty easily, it was today's software.
Probably a lot easier to chuckle, Cap. They found it in December, and then again in January.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think it says one year, so it might be, it's, there's some interpretation there, but I think that that would be, if we just put it in the policy, that it's, you know, all violations will, you know, each individual violation will be on a rolling 12-year, you know, plan.
12-month.
12-month plan, yeah.
About 12 years, 12 months, I think it's a year, I forgot what the word, actual word, one, I think it's a year.
But it doesn't define it as a rolling year or a calendar year.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think it says calendar year, if I'm...
I'll check, I'll look it up.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, I think that's the plan, is that what the, the big issue, the big thing that I want the board to think about is, we have one district code enforcement officer. You know, is that something, is it something that we want to think, all, all that, the board has the ability to power anybody it wants to, the question is, who does it want to? Do we need to put any, if we start empowering other people, do we need to give them any sort of special training or anything like that, or do we just want Bob to be the guy?
Do, do we by law need to have them specially trained, Mike?
Well, we had two people, we had two people, now we have one.
Right. Philip was, Philip was the other one.
Right.
But, but, I mean, he's actually licensed and everything, he's stated.
Okay.
He has to do, Bob, Bob, you explain what you have to do every year. Pretty understandable.
I'm Bob Brunt, a, a Sunday code enforcement officer, and we have, there's, there's different levels of certification that you go through, and it's up to the different organizations, what they, what they desire for the amount of training. I have, I'm certified at three different levels, and they're, they're talking about all the different aspects of code enforcement, the legalist aspects of it. There's five levels total, but I, I'm certified in three, and every year, you have to have a certain amount of CEUs, or earned credit units, to keep the level, to keep the certifications in each level. And the classes are a week long, there's a test, a very difficult test that you have to pass. It's 40 hours of, of classes before you take the test, and that's something that each level requires, so it's, it's a fair amount of training. Honestly, the, the most amount of training you get is on the job training. There's, there's no way you could train to, to have to deal with the different situations that you're involved in on a daily basis, it's, it's, you know, you have to have a, kind of like a duck and just let it roll off your back, because you get a lot, you get a lot of, of things that you rather not be involved with, but it's part of the job. So there is a, a certain amount of training, and it's just, you know, it's...
What would it take to, to get one person trained to the, to the level that they could do the enforcement activity?
The first level, level one, I think it's fundamentals of code enforcement, or fundamental aspects of code enforcement, something like that, would be a good class to take, but the more you, and, and they overlap, each one deals with, with the same topics.
Now, my question is, can you do the first one, and then be legally able to write citations?
You don't have to do any of the, of the certification to do that, but if, the more you know, the better you're gonna be. The first level, I would recommend highly, yes.
Okay.
That's up to the, that's up to the district.
All right, then I didn't understand something earlier. Can you appoint somebody today, and they can write citations?
You can, and the board can.
But then they have one year to...
Nope.
Get CE, they never have to have CEUs, they never have to have anything?
The board can appoint every member of district staff.
Okay, that's fine.
But you should be qualified, I mean, I mean, the courses, I mean, you should be trained for it, absolutely. I mean, I went to the training with Bob, and, and, and then we sent Philip last year, or a couple years ago, and, and I think he was, he was a level two.
I think he had two, yeah.
And, you know, it just appears for what you say.
Again, it's not a legal requirement.
But appoint me to also do it, they never did, because we always had Bob.
Hey, you know what I have there enough to do?
No, there's, there's no legal requirement, that they have the training.
That's what I, I was reading that, that there's no legal requirement. Does the level of training go a long way in the magistrate's opinion?
That would be my guess, that would be my guess. If it's, you, you would not want to, to go before a special magistrate with a, a violation that had come from an untrained person, I wouldn't.
Well, in addition, that would probably limit your liability that you had training, and if somebody claimed you did something. I think, obviously, we would want that to happen.
Well, you guys all realize that code enforcement is a very complex and complicated thing to grasp, and the more training you have, the better you're able to do that.
I don't think there's any question around that, I was just trying to understand the requirements, if they're working, so...
Different, different municipalities, different, they do require...
We could require them, but the state doesn't.
Yes, that's true.
That's really the question, so... Okay, any other board question, comments?
You're going to bring us back a plan that you want us to adopt?
Yeah, and I guess the other thing is, none of us are qualified to say that these timeframes are appropriate. So I guess Bob with his experience and Mike with your oversight experience, come back to us with recommendations there too. 30 days is too long, tell us that. Okay. All right. Any public comment? Pam Norcross will now come to... I didn't say that.
Okay, kid.
Okay. Out of here.